We'll find out. All right. It is 5:03, so we'll call tonight's meeting to order. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go to number three next, an open public comment. Under state law, we need to keep public comment open for half an hour. So to make sure we use our time efficiently, we'll open that up now if any member of the public would like to speak. Anything on the agenda? All right. That's going. All right. If there is a need for public session, we do that at the end of the meeting, but I'm not sure that we do have a need for one.
My one, if you just want to talk about the contracts.
Okay.
Just for reputations or questions, I'd do that in non-public.
Okay.
Under letter C.
All right. So next item is the Swayze Central School Solar Project. We have two bids from the RFP process.
Yep.
You shared the bids with the board members.
Did.
What would you recommend is the best way to approach?
I would recommend that if there's, we want to have conversation, I would do that in non-public. And then I would come out of non-public and then, you know, make your decision at public at that time.
Okay. Is there a desire among the board to enter into non-public to discuss the RFP responses?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we, do we, have any, do we, one, is that like all we're doing really today?
The other item is the 24-25 academic calendar and then an attached memorandum of agreement with the Brentwood Educators, Brentwood Teachers Association because there's a decrease in the number of school days and that's being out, the decrease in school days is being allocated to professional development. And three sort of on-campus professional development, one independent study professional development, and one additional prep day at the beginning of the year.
So we could do those first if you want.
I'm wondering, yeah, then people can leave if they don't want to come back to.
This has to be like 30 minutes of public, right?
Yep. So.
Oh, because we can't go into non-public, then it wouldn't count towards our 30 minutes.
We'd have to, we have to stop the clock.
We have to stop the public comment timer.
Okay. So the board packet contains the proposed 24-25 academic calendar. We would have to approve, vote to approve that. And then, I don't think, do we need a motion to approve the MOA?
The MOA would go with it, so we'd need a motion for both of those and then have a signature from you, Brian, on that MOA.
Okay.
And I did bring a copy with me.
Excellent. So I just have a question of why the decrease in number of school days.
Because in January?
Yeah, because if you recall that the holiday break in December, it's now expands over two, two weeks.
Ah, because of where Christmas falls.
So when we looked at trying to build, the contract also says there's a number of days that they can have before the start of school and then the number of days after, it can only be one day after and then up to three before. One of theirs is at their discretion. So Ms. Murray, Principal Q, Assistant Principal Gallo, myself met with the union leadership to talk about alternatives. And that is why the MOA came up, that if they did, like we did a couple of years ago when we had the two power days, not having to extend people to go longer, that they do their professional development on their own and submit time to show what they're working on and that would be approved by Principal Q. If they don't complete that by the time that is mentioned in the MOU, they would have to come back that additional day to finish any work. So the number of days teachers are going to work is still the same, it's just manifested in a little bit different way. So that is the rationale. This year, or next year's two-week hiatus is really an anomaly. So different contracts allowed us to put more at the beginning of the year or at the end. The Brentwood contract, however, does not allow that because it says how many days before and after we can work with it.
Okay. And we, I mean, I think I know the answer, but I'll ask anyway, just for the record. We're still within the requirement for the state for hours and instructions.
Yeah, so remember, at a elementary K5, K6, excuse me, you have to be 945 hours minimumly. We're well over 1,000, I think we're at 1,020, so we're well over that time period.
Okay.
And this schedule that you see accounts for one traditional snow day next year. Everything else would be a remote day so that we would fall in and keep to the, to this, to this schedule.
Just, I'm assuming it's just the way that this copied in, but the in-service days and don't show up in the key, like on the calendar?
Yep.
So like, just if this is shared out, like the 10th, there's all those in-service days just aren't visible?
Yes, so I do have a copy that will make sure that that PDF.
You can like see the.
I apologize if that's how it came out. I've seen it so many times, I didn't even, I didn't even notice it.
No, that's okay.
That's my apologies.
As long as it's shared out.
Yeah. Yeah, so just to know those, those days would be September 10th, and that's because of the primary and voting here. October 11th, November 5th, again, another voting day. January 17th, March 11th, again, another voting day. And those, those are the days. And then Ron has a couple of half-days just for parent-teacher conferences on February 7th and February 14th. And those days that were selected are common with our elementary schools, so they will be able to do shared BD. We actually worked on that today. So being able to share cost and locations and working on similar projects in all of our elementary schools.
Sounds good.
Okay.
It's a long break. It still makes me nervous.
Oh, so excited. I know that everyone is very questioning it, but I think it's so awesome. It's the way that life should be.
I would just say, walking through this building last December and seeing the sickness in kids getting here and staff, it was, hopefully this will help with that too. Uh-oh, so.
Are there any other further questions or comments about the calendar or the memorandum of agreement?
No, I think that's.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the 24-25 calendar as presented?
I would like to make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it. No, I don't like it. That's okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
And then a separate motion for the memorandum of agreement?
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement as except as presented.
I will second that one.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Brian, I'll have you sign this. It's official.
Even though it says draft?
Yeah. We'll change that after that. Right, we have your electronic signature correct?
You do.
Step right up to the mic, sir.
When we change it after.
What do you mean? What?
Okay.
Did you guys talk about elections at all with regard to the calendar?
We're closed for.
We did. So we're closed for the state primary on September 10th.
Yep.
Closed for federal election on November 5th. Closed for talent elections on March.
And another one in Jan.
11th.
11th, yep.
So.
We miss any? I don't think so.
Sounds, sounds good.
That's what we worked with with Jen last year.
Is this SAU Y or just Brentwood?
SAU Y.
Okay.
Middle school and high school might have one day that they're not the same because the polling doesn't, or voting doesn't happen there, but all of our elementary schools are.
Okay.
Yep.
Are there other matters we would like to discuss or, now that you, member of the public present, anything else for public comment? We have 22 minutes of open public comment remaining.
I can just fill you in on number two, just a little bit, Brian, and then when we go into non-public, we can, you have that. But in regards to the bond payment duration, so Molly, we had to, we have to submit the application to the bond bank by next Friday, or by this Friday, excuse me. So just as an initial to get everything approved, so we put it in there for the, what was allocated by the town of $850,000. That could drop depending on the prices that we received. We have up until June to make those changes.
Okay.
We also have up until June to make the changes of how, how long we want in duration of that. We put in for the seven years, just as a placeholder so that we would have that. And I've brought copies of that so you can see what that looks like. But again, that was based on the $850,000 allocation. The other piece that we're still looking at too is with the bond bank and bond council, they're looking at whether we have to take out the entire 850 or depending on how much the bid that is selected, with that 30% tax credit, if we could take that out because we know that that's going to be coming as revenue. Or we get the whole bond package and then could we put that into like our maintenance and trust fund and then be able to use that for subsequent payments later on, which we had talked about at meetings. So that is still up in the air with bond council, since this is newer type of project. Those are the two things that they're going to give us guidance on. So you do not have to make a decision on that, that bond payment today. Just know that everything has been submitted and that I would say in May that we should finalize exactly what we want it to look like, knowing the bid and the overall price.
But it's necessary to, to select a response to the RFP tonight so they can begin promptly?
Correct.
Okay. Struggling for other things to talk about here. There is a policy committee meeting scheduled tonight and one of the policies is a new, or significantly updated wellness policy that I believe Allison's committee worked on. So that is fairly robust and we'll look at that tonight and then bring that back to this group in May, along with a couple of other policies pertaining to student discipline. So things relating to suspensions and school suspensions, things of that nature. So those are the policies that'll be reviewed this month for us to vote on next month.
Yeah, and I think we're going to make the recommendation, the student discipline policy is lengthy, I think it's like 21 pages.
Yeah.
So there's a couple other in there. So these are the lengthier ones that we may use our May meeting as a first read, which we typically don't do, but since they're so lengthy, to give everybody the time to digest it, that actually make the motion in June, so we'd have no new policies for June. We'd have a two-month carryover for policies. So that was a recommendation unless that changes tonight with Ms. Murray.
No, that's fine. Yeah, there are 35 pages total of policies to review, only one of which was brief. So.
Do, I do have something I do want to highlight and I would like to make a recommendation to bring. We had the innovations conference last Tuesday and Wednesday at the state through New Hampshire School Administrators Association. Tuesday was, you know, schools are doing innovative things and it was faculty members presenting. And then on Wednesday, we had students come and the whole day was students presenting. We were fortunate enough that we had three Swayze 5th graders who started that, that off. So they were a panel with also with Pembroke Middle School students and their, their task was to talk to this room, and it was 120 people, about what made Swayze the school of excellence. And I would tell you, the three students that spoke, spoke so eloquently, talked about their school, they got a standing ovation, but a couple were like, you had those middle school kids sweating, like, what are you doing? So I just, it was, to be there and watch it, it was amazing. And so I'd like to have them just come here in May and recognize them for, for representing Swayze so well, but also just talk a little bit about what they talked about because I think it's important we, that we hear from the kids and it's a change. The first time we've ever run a conference, that kids ran it and adults were going to their presentations. We had nine student presentations over the day, five which were done by SAU 16 students. So we had five, half of the, half the presentations were done by SAU 16 students, either in the high school, Swayze, or SST. And they were phenomenal. So I think that should be noted and highlighted and you should just get a glimpse of what those three students spoke about.
That's awesome. I feel like the, like they present about themselves so often that like, that has to really have an impact. Like you can, you know, the conferences where they're like, they talk about.
They were not nervous to present. I will tell you that. I went to a couple on Tuesday seeing adults who've been doing this for years and you could see them shaking and these, you know, 10-year-old kids just, it was matter-of-fact, give me the mic, you know, passing it over. They were, they were amazing. So I, I thank you for saying that because it's apparent that they are not.
Yeah, like they're used to it.
Nervous to present anymore. People, 100 people, you know, they didn't know them and they were great. So, yeah.
That's awesome.
That was one of my very first experiences. I was on the mayor's youth council in Manchester and I had an assistant superintendent yell at me and I remember not being nervous and Mr. Adamakis, he's still around, if you know him.
I do.
And, yeah, it is extraordinarily impactful.
Yeah.
To go through those experiences and carry that with you.
That's awesome.
We could also just give you a quick update with Mr. Lister being here, but over break, we do have our landscaping firm coming back and so the, the foyer, or the.
Courtyard.
Yes, is going to look top-notch. They're going to come back out and do some cleaning and then they're going to build up all the beds again. So it'll be in here all next week, so I would definitely highlight that as we walk into our next meeting. That will look much different than it did last year at this time. So we appreciate that work and the work they're doing.
That's awesome.
And I know you've been working on getting final quotes for the roof so that we can start the project.
Yeah, we have two currently and expecting at least two more in the next week to 10 days.
Perfect.
I know you've been looking at door replacements as well.
Yep.
So definitely looking at the facility, so we've been on that project and looking at the replacement and really hitting that well, so I appreciate Rusty working.
Yep, we're getting quotes on that as well. Yep.
And will the roof, like the repairs that do need to happen, is that coming from our budget line items or the, or the bond?
No, from the budget line items. We had, we had put money aside for projects and that was one of them that was in there.
Mm-hmm. Perfect.
I was, I was really hoping to hear the solar discussion tonight, the RFP comparison and so on. But one of my questions would, would be, will that spreadsheet be updated, given the changes in market prices for electricity? And also, how convinced are you that our, our roof, and maybe you've addressed it already, that our roof is really going to be good for as long as the solar panels are going to be good?
I think you've looked into the roof question, so I'd trust you or Rusty to answer that question.
Sure.
I believe we're comfortable that it would.
Right.
That there's some work that needs to be done to prepare the roof, but I believe the, the lifespan of the roof, once updated, will accommodate the lifespan of the solar panels.
Yeah. And we started this project about a year and a half ago. We started looking at the roof. There's different portions of the roof that have already been redone that will expand through that 30-year life expectancy, but we do need some patches above the gym roof and that's what we're looking at now. So that's the only area that we're concerned, Jack. And so that is why we will get that, so that it will, it will be sufficient for the life of, of the project.
And then the first question about updating, like the spreadsheet that was presented at the hearing is what you're talking about?
Yeah, so we will post both of the RFPs because it becomes public documents. So there is, you know, formulas that they've used in their, their proposal that you'll be able to see that we have, whether we'll typically update ours. We'll have to go back with our solar expert over there and decide what more information that we will do because Kate will be chairing that, that committee. So put that on our list to do.
When would that update be available? Do you have an idea?
I don't. We'd have to schedule a meeting and look at that.
Yeah. Yes.
We'll tackle that.
Yeah. I think once we, I mean, I don't think this spreadsheet will be that hard to update once we know the, once we make.
Shouldn't be a formula, right?
Right, right. It is all, the formula's already in there, so it's just basically changing the numbers in it.
Does it have to be 30 continuous minutes?
It does not.
So we can pause?
We can pause if you want.
And then restart it.
And then whatever we come back out with, that's the number of minutes that we would have to stay open.
Okay. So we can stop public comment at 18 minutes, roughly 15 seconds, and then entertain.
Keep it open while we're voting on whether we're going into non-public. All right. I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public. We can get another minute out of this. We have to roll call vote, I mean.
So under RSA 91A32C.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Yes.
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 Okay, we've unanimous vote to enter non-public session.
Okay.
So enter non-public at 5:23 PM.
Right.
Okay. We are back from non-public at 5:42 PM. We'll reopen public comment. We have just over 11 minutes left of the required public comment period, so at any time during that time, the public is welcome to comment. So we retired under RSA 91A32C to review the two RFPs we received. We reviewed them, we've come to a decision, so we can take a vote on which RFP to select if someone would like to make a motion to select one, if they don't feel strongly about it, or I could do it, doesn't matter.
So just want to say that both RFPs were really great, very similar in, in kind of the comprehensiveness and I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the Barrington Power RFP.
I will second that motion. All in favor? Aye. And I want, the motion carries, want to echo Dr. Bonifidi's comment. I thought both presentations were excellent, both responses were excellent. We really thought that they both addressed all the things we were looking to see addressed, in particular the educational component. I think the deciding factors in the end, from our point of view, were the, the timing, the Barrington Power is able to start right away that would enable us to get energy savings as soon as this fall. That would enable us to take advantage of what we've been telling the tax credit, although I know there's a debate about that terminology, before a change in the federal administration, which might imperil that tax credit. And also the ability to report a savings to the taxpayers and to use far less than the amount we were authorized to seek in the bond. So I think that is why we reached the decision we did and I don't believe there's too much more to say about that at this time. I think, as Chris mentioned, the RFP documents will become public after this meeting, so those will be available on the SAU website or on our website.
Yep, they'll be attached to the minutes.
Attached to the minutes.
Yep.
And so our next step will be at our next board meeting to discuss the duration of the bond based on the price of the RFP we accepted, or I keep saying RFP, based on the price of the bid we accepted. So that'll happen at the June meeting, or not June meeting, the April meeting, which is April 4th?
May.
May 4th. We're already in April, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. It feels like March out right now.
Right.
All right.
Jack?
Is it okay to ask how much difference in starting time there was? Was it months?
So my understanding is that Barrington Power would be able to begin work at the end of the school year this summer with an aim to complete by September and that erosion energy would, would start next spring? So that's a significant difference in time.
Yep, understood. Okay.
All right, we still have eight more minutes of public comment for which we are required to remain open.
I'm going home and see if there's some cookies being made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You don't need to stay, though.
I'm taking the gear with me.
You do need to stay, I guess.
Can you read out the final bid amounts or should I wait and check the website?
If you.
I have it.
Do you have them? Okay. I just don't have it pulled up.
So as you know, Rachel, revision was turnkey cost of $829,170 and Barrington Power came in at turnkey cost of $662,000.
Thank you. Sorry, can I ask a follow-up question? Do you have the system sides for both projects? Were they the same?
Very, very similar, just revisions was just a little bit bigger than Barrington Power's, but yes, we do have that.
Yes.
I've got it here if you'd like.
Yeah, perfect.
You want the annual generation number?
Sure.
Okay.
And for SDC.
Yep, so you were, total, the annual generation was 363, for you, as you know, 627, and for Barrington was 322. On the DC side was 301.5 and you were at 337.
Thank you, Russell.
Sure.
I can't see your timer anymore.
Yeah, that's kind of where, we have about six minutes left of public comment. Five and a half. The watch pot never boils. Best, but it.
I like to watch.
It's like an interesting law to require, you know?
I don't think, I don't think that that is the way that the law was intended.
A lot of laws that get made and that's how they come out, but I think.
I think it was intended that you don't cut people off, not that like you sit around in a meeting where no one wants to make comments after the meeting's over.
And wait.
To like make sure that everyone has to have at least half an hour meeting.
Correct.
It's the most ridiculous thing.
Yep.
I would agree with your assessment of that, that law. Not that I'm opposed to public comment, but.
No.
The opportunity has been afforded and.
Be like a ratio to your meeting?
Yes.
Maybe I'd like one more public comment. I saw Rachel leads for revision energy. Obviously, really bummed to hear that we're not successful bidder.
Understand.
But would just like to thank you guys for your consideration and to the SAU for working on this project for a year and a half and all the time you've put into it. And to also just put out there that if you end up not being happy with your selected contractor, we would obviously be totally happy to talk to you guys again or if you find that, you know, they can't actually follow through with things that you base the selection on, like the timing, if they find they can't actually get interconnection approval in two months, we would certainly be happy to keep that conversation open.
Thank you.
You know where to find us.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. We appreciate your being here tonight, your attendance at prior meetings, actually, because you've presented to us before and this is, as you know, you've been involved throughout. It's been a long process for us, a long process for you. And we appreciate all the work that you put into the, the bid and the partnership with us and working with Rusty and so forth. So thank you also.
Thanks.
Are you coaching right now?
I practiced last night.
Are you coaching right now?
Yep.
Yep.
Are you?
You, where were you practicing that you were allowed on the fields?
Timberland.
They don't care if their fields are torn up?
It's not used for games.
Right, yeah.
So it's not, it's not too bad. Then no one, no one likes to practice there, so it's usually pretty open.
Is that where your field, your practices always are?
On and off, yeah. There, Brentwood is easier because it's closest, but.
Yeah. People from Stratton don't like to come to Brentwood, though.
No.
It's all, they can fit like so many people.
In Brentwood?
In the Brentwood fields.
Yeah.
Like in the ball, it's just absurd.
Well, they're changing the whole, the whole, like they're taking out that baseball field to change the whole way that you go into it.
It's not good?
Really?
I noticed a lot of trees are being cut down right next to it.
I don't know exactly what they're doing, but somehow I think they don't like the, like narrow passage that you have to go, which I actually think I like because people have to go so slow through there. You can't, you can't, like kids might run across, there might be another car coming, you have to like creep through there and it's like a, better than a speed bump.
Oh, they're taking the, the baseball field in the front? That's the only one that gets used?
No, I think the EJBL.
Like the little one?
Field, the smaller one.
The little one in the front.
Yeah.
There's always people on that. I think so, it should be parking lot.
I don't know. We always play on the other, the upper one.
What do you mean the upper one?
Well, the, not the EJBL, like the softball league plays in the.
Oh, the two, yeah, yeah.
The two fields that are further back, not the front one. Are you playing softball this summer?
I am. I haven't signed up yet, but I usually sign up about mid-season when I realize I didn't sign up yet.
Go away. I played softball for, I don't know, 17 years and then after my last game, I just never picked my glove up again.
Oh, do you want to play? We need women.
Just going to ask the same question, we also need women.
It's a, I'm like, I just never, I was so burnt out that I just.
Oh, well, let me tell you about the Brentwood Adult League. You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.